This is election time, Samamish city council member election is going on. If you are in Samamish area, you may see a lot of votes, vote for Karthik, vote for Len, that kind of thing. And we have the Karthik here and there is lot to talk. And especially the city council is very close to us, when we look at the property bills. When we have this traffic things going on, all of them directly impacts us in our day to day life, especially the safety things as well. So all of that, we have a lot of questions to Karthik, let's hear from him.
Fantastic. Hello, hello Guru, thank you for arranging this, you know, sort of like an AMA as well.
Yeah.
So I am happy to share whatever I know, I mean it's still a long journey ahead of me. Uh but happy to, happy to share whatever I I have learnt so far.
Yeah.
And I can explain what council elections are, what the process is and why we as residents should be, you know, focused and take care about who is running, what what are they running on and so on and so forth.
Yeah, makes sense, maybe maybe we can start from there, right? Can you explain what is this process is, what is this city council election is about?
So every city in Washington or all over America usually has a form of governance. So America has four distinct levels of governance. Um and the most basic form of governance would be at the city level.
Yeah.
And then the next form of governance would be at the county, state and federal.
Yeah.
And the cities are usually governed by city councils. And within the city, there are two types of governance, a city council where a mayor is elected. And the mayor is the CEO of the city.
Yeah.
And a city where a city council is selected, but a city manager is the CEO.
Mm hmm.
Right? So if you reflect upon a city as a company.
Mm hmm.
The council is typically the board of the city. Either the mayor or the city manager is the CEO in charge of execution of the policies.
Yeah.
Right? And the city council as a board sets the vision for the city.
Mm hmm.
Are we a high density, high transit, you know, a lot of jobs kind of a city? Are we, you know, catering towards single family homes? Samamish, if you actually go read the Samamish city website, they call, we call ourselves a bedroom community.
Oh, okay.
A bedroom community means a place where families live. So more importance is given to schools, safety, parks, quality of life.
Yeah.
Um we don't have.
That's why you don't have a big company, uh s- s- like buildings here?
Yes, that's why you don't have major employers.
Mm hmm.
Uh that's why you don't have a freeway also here.
Yeah.
So, um so our s- this entire city character is defined by the city council.
Okay, so you said two type, right? Mayor base and then the CEO base, which format Samamish is?
Samamish is the manager run city.
Okay, so then basically the board is what governs this high level things, that's where you are contesting.
Yes.
And then the board looks like there is multiple positions, can you talk about this election is for all the roles on the board, like which one is it?
So Samamish city specifically has seven positions on the board.
Uh huh.
And four positions are going to poll this year.
Okay.
So it's a rotating, you know, each position has a four year term.
Okay.
So the odd positions one, three, five and seven go to poll this year. Even positions two, four and six will go to poll two years down the road.
Got it.
And the next, after two years, the odd positions again go to polls.
Yeah.
Um so this way, you know, you have a chance to reshape the council every two years.
Okay, so the four positions are going now, looks like one of the position, fifth position five has two levels of.
Elections.
Election, right? Can you talk about why this five has two levels?
So, um I'll talk about why the position five is occupied by the current council member Kali Clark.
Mm hmm.
But Kaylee is not running, she decided not to run.
Hmm.
So it became what is called an open position.
Okay.
And you know, three people have filed nominations to run for open, open position.
Okay.
One being me.
Okay.
Because there are three people running, there is something called a primary.
Hmm.
And the primary will be um done or will be completed in August.
Okay.
So whoever comes as the first and the second in the primary will then move to the general.
Okay.
So there will be another election in November fourth and whoever wins the general then goes to the council.
Got it, okay.
So the other three positions have only two people running.
Okay.
And hence their polls go to November directly.
Got it, is this each position focused on a particular area?
No, all of Samamish will vote for all of positions.
Okay.
So there is no distinction about, hey, this position represents Klahani or Trosax or North Samamish, so there is no distinction.
Got it, okay.
All of the fifty one thousand odd voters of Samamish will vote for all four positions.
Okay, looks like you need to go through two levels of hurdle here.
Yes, yes.
Interesting, what brought you here, like what is your journey to the city council, how long you are associated with the city council?
Yeah, so I have been associated with, you know, city issues in general.
Mm hmm.
Um since I got my citizenship, that was about eight, nine years ago.
Okay.
Um because at the end of the day, you know, we extended this house, for example.
Mm hmm.
So we had to go to permit, through permitting processes and all that, that brought me closer to how the city operates.
Yeah.
And obviously, when you find opportunities to improve city processes, you give feedback, you create tickets and so on and so forth. And I've done that.
Okay.
And then when the city council elections came about, uh in one of those years twenty nineteen, I believe. Uh based on my interactions with city council members and and bringing up issues, some of them asked me to, for, to support their candidacy.
Yeah.
And so I was involved in actually running some of their campaigns.
Oh nice, okay.
Um and then I also became part of the planning commissioner during the COVID times.
Okay.
Um and then that this, you know, running the campaign allowed me to understand the issues in the city. Being in the planning commission allowed me to understand the process of the city.
Got it, okay.
Right? So you wanna know if you have an issue, what is the process to which, by which you can take this forward and resolve?
Yeah.
So those were the two things and then, you know, life took over. Um so for a couple of years, I was just watching all the events in the city, but I was not, you know, super, super focused on it.
Okay.
But this year, um you know, with the, with the bomb cyclone that happened in November, we were without power for like eight days, at least here.
Yeah, it was scary actually, there there that time I had also had a question, what the city is doing, why it is eight days, right?
Right, and then that happened and then in March, the city put an ordinance for utility tax.
Hmm.
At six percent of your, all of your utilities. So that propelled me to think that, hey, if I wanna change anything in the city.
Yeah.
I better run for the city council, so.
Yeah, I think you touched upon both of them, maybe we need to talk more there on terms of preparedness for these calamity kind of thing, how we will quickly respond to it. And also the tax, definitely I wanna talk about why it is increasing, where it is spending and things like that.
Yes.
But before that, you mentioned what the planning commission, can you just talk about what is that role is, what does that experience brought you?
Yeah, so the planning, so Samamish has, or actually every city has a certain commissions.
Mm hmm.
There is a planning commission, there is a park and recreation commission, there is an arts commission.
Okay.
There is even a sustainability commission.
Okay.
So this is group of residents who volunteer their time.
Yes, okay.
Right, so they don't get paid. And so they provide the firsthand feedback to the city.
Okay.
On everything from housing, zoning, the type of housing that you want. Like for example, should you allow an additional dwelling unit in the properties or what type of property should have additional dwelling units? Or should we promote town centers and condominiums?
Okay.
Right, or apartments, for example, right? So the city continuously keeps updating the codes.
Okay, zone codes.
Not, the zone code, you know, the residential zone is one aspect of it.
Okay.
But housing, the codes for the housing also.
Okay.
Right, uh how much setback should you have from the, you know, um you know, from your property line to the first, you know, stone that you lay and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
So the entire character, the vision, aesthetics, right, of the city is defined by these codes.
Got it.
And planning commission is the first place where these codes are reviewed.
Okay.
And then they, you know, gets modified and then finally it goes to the council for approval.
Got it, okay, perfect, okay. So with that, I think like you had a good experience with the city council, you were pretty much involved, it looks like, and then you also had a personal experience of going through an approval process.
Yes.
I think many of us hit the road when we have real issue and me, city has to solve it. When you hit the system, that's where you see the pain points, the gaps in the system, why it is so, right? The day to day things are going, but when you have an issue, that's where. And I wanna touch upon a couple of concern or issues which is processing things, right? One of the thing, the recent time in terms of safety, especially with an Indian community itself. Even elders are walking, there is chain snatching happening and things like that, there could be one or two instances, but it scares people.
Yes.
How do you see, how do your, what is your plans on addressing those kind of things?
Yeah, it's a fantastic question, I think, you know, even though Samamish is one of the safest cities, um you know, in in Washington state. I think it's the sixth safest city in fact in in USA.
Mm hmm.
There have been various studies that have been conducted and you can see that. I think the mayor even received an award for it recently.
Okay.
There is still areas for us to improve, especially when it comes to senior, you know, protection to seniors, protection to, you know, um people who have different assets.
Yeah.
In the homes, so the break-ins do happen.
Yeah.
Now, these are, this is exactly where the city council has to step in.
Mm hmm.
So I, I received a, a change.org petition.
Yeah.
Which was signed by nine hundred people.
Yeah.
But if I actually ask the city council members, they have never seen this.
Oh no.
Right, so first of all, I think, you know, when we see these safety issues, um how do we make it um in, how do we take it in front of the city council?
Okay.
Is an important thing, otherwise the city council is going to think that everything is hunky dory, right? So for me, I think, you know, being from the Indian, you know, ancestry, I think the people found it a little bit more easier to share these anecdotes and change.org petitions.
Okay.
And I would love for these citizens and residents to go in front of the council on Tuesday to talk about it. Because unless you talk about it repeatedly, the council is going to think that, you know, it's, it's a safety, you know, the safety has no issues in Samamish.
Yeah.
Right, so for me, again, if you take the Inglewood issue, right? Like many of the residents didn't even know that they could go and talk to the council about the streets becoming private.
Mm hmm.
So for me, the critical piece, now that I'm aware of the safety issues.
Yeah.
Would be to work with King County Sheriff's Office to see if we can have additional forces available in city.
Okay.
Or why there is delay in responding to such complaints.
Okay.
It is typically, you know, due to staffing issues.
Hmm.
So what does it mean, like how much extra money do we have to give and where in the budget can we kind of look for that money? So at the end of the day, it is all about resources that the King County Sheriff, Sheriff's Office can put for Samamish.
Mm hmm.
Right, so that's the area that we have to focus on.
Okay, okay, yeah, I think like even though it's the sixth safest place, but still there's lot more, always a ways to improve and definitely you think, you're touching on it, maybe we should see how these things improve as well.
No, definitely, at the King County Sheriff's Office, like we contract out our police force to King County.
King County, okay.
Um the reason why we contract out is that we are a smaller city.
Mm hmm.
Uh we cannot have a police force, it will be too costly for us to have a police force of our own.
Okay.
And everybody understands the cost of living nowadays with property taxes, so I don't think we wanna go there.
Hmm.
But we could incrementally, you know, get more support from King County Sheriff's Offices.
Correct.
That's why you want to have council members who can negotiate on behalf of the city.
Okay.
With these agencies.
Got it, okay.
You gotta get the best bang for your buck.
Yes, definitely, okay. And then I think touched upon that property tax, right? Definitely that's one of the biggest concern of every resident here in Samamish, whenever we see annually a bill showing up, shooting up. Especially comparing to the other cities, Samamish has much higher as well.
Mm hmm.
What are we going to solve it, how are we making sure this is not keep growing, at least stays in a place? How, what is the planning happening on terms of tax?
So, um the tax itself is determined by King County.
Mm hmm.
Right? Um to be very fair, uh the total num- amount of tax that Washington has is less compared to many other states.
Okay.
Because we don't have income tax, we only have sales tax and property tax.
Yeah.
Right? But property tax continues to go up.
Okay.
Um because our entire state revenue depends on property tax.
Yes, yeah.
And when you have governments and they have policies and they have programs in place, the tax tends to go up. Because the cost of those programs keep going up. That's why when you are in a city council, what is more important is what is the city's share of property tax.
Yeah.
Today, I, I would say, I'm just gonna throw out a number, I think Samamish gets fourteen percent of property tax from King County.
Okay.
And they are allowed to increase that percentage by one percent every year.
Okay.
Today, Samamish is thinking that they will raise that one percent to three percent.
Oh, okay.
So the fourteen may become seventeen and then seventeen can become twenty.
Okay.
Now, now, you know, King County is not gonna keep the tax constant and give Samamish seventeen, it's gonna pass it on to us.
Okay.
Right, so that's one area where I am super interested to see, go ahead.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm asking you how we can cut down or increase, but you are giving a surprise news of it may increase instead of one percent, three percent.
Go to, go to Samamish city website and look at their legislative priorities for twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Or if you visit my Facebook page, I have actually, you know, linked all of these things, right? Um so there is a possi- there is a unbridled expenses going in the city of Samamish.
Okay.
What are we spending the money on, is the question.
Mm hmm.
In addition to that, we have the six percent u- utility tax that we talked about. Uh we also have a metropolitan park district tax that's coming about.
Hmm, okay.
So there are quite a few taxes that are being talked. In fact, the city has contracted out to a financial company.
Mm hmm.
It's for two hundred fifty thousand dollars contract.
Mm hmm.
To help the city figure out how to raise more debt.
Hmm.
Who is gonna pay for this debt?
Oh no, okay.
So the city intends to issue bonds, debt obligations. So whether they are going to do it or not, that's a different story, but you are now engaging a finance advisory company and paying them four hundred fifty thousand dollars just to talk about it.
No, so are you going to, like, are you mission to control these expenditure, especially? Good example is, I was seeing this newsletters coming up from Samamish city as well. And earlier it was just a newspaper, it's, yes, it's worth, that information is what we needed, but now it looks to be a fancy thing, I was wondering is city spending in the right place, now I'm hearing they're going to spend good amount of money for finance advice and things like that. Is this properly spent, are you mission to fix that or have a voice there?
Yes.
And ensure things are happening in the right way?
Yes, that's exactly why I decided to run.
Okay.
Because, you know, you, we can talk a lot about housing crisis and traffic and so on and so forth. The city is barreling down towards insolvency, if we don't control the expenses.
Okay.
We are eleven point four million dollars in debt right now.
Mm hmm.
Um for which the taxes have been raised. And please go to, I can, you know, probably send you the chart, this difference between income and expense keeps widening.
Hmm.
Um so where do, where does the money go, that's exactly the question we are all asking.
But this is surprising, right? Because the property tax and property prices of Samamish is increasing, the number of homes is keep expanding as well. Compared to five years back, now the Samamish residents or number of homes which we have in this city is increased. With that, all the increase happening, where is this deficit coming up, why this is going in a deficit which is surprising?
That's because, um, two reasons, one is that we are spending money on things that we shouldn't be spending money on.
Mm hmm.
So, um recently, the city council moved five million dollars from park and recreation to buying a piece of property in the town center.
Mm hmm.
The piece of property was one point three million dollars.
Okay.
So the city doesn't even have plans for the other three point seven million dollars.
Hmm.
So why would you move money from parks and recreation commission?
Hmm.
If you don't even have plans for that money, right? Um second thing is, we have agreed to lay roads in town center about for six million dollars that we shouldn't be doing from a city perspective.
Yeah.
A developer should be doing. Um five years ago, when I was working on campaign, the mantra was growth pays for growth.
Mm hmm.
The reality today is residents are paying for growth.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, there's, there should be some change, it's bit of concerning and you touched upon the improve, the park fund is taken out. But unfortunately, in Samamish, we don't have any entertainment things, there is no theater here, there is nothing more entertainment, anything we need to drive to Bellevue or drive to Isakua, except few shops here, there is nothing more, this city is looking at all of that, are they like?
No, unfortunately, no, forget about entertainment, you cut your finger.
Mm hmm.
You want emergency care?
Mm hmm.
There is no emergency care in Samamish.
Yeah, just urgent care.
Just urgent care. This, this is life saving, you know, we talk about safety, right? This is one part of this a- aspect of safety. So the, the city is not focusing on it, the city's current focus is only on.
So you have plan for that, like what is your, are you going to move these needles?
We, you know, we, first we wanna get in there and then, you know, we need to have a conversation with Over Lakes, we need to have a conversation with, you know, how do we take the CW campus, what do we do with it? Like, there are many ideas that are floating around, for example, should we look upon Samamish as a college city?
Yeah.
Right, can we bring, you know, Western Washington University, for example?
Yes, yes.
Right? Um so there are many ideas that are floating, but definitely some are much more solidified than others.
Yeah.
Um obviously, I'm, you know, trying to manage both my campaign, getting my message out and then solidifying the plans itself.
Yeah.
Uh but definitely emergency services, um we, I, in my campaign manifesto, I speak about a botanical garden.
Okay.
Because we have to leverage the strength of Samamish, which is our natural beauty.
Mm hmm.
We have Samamish stewards, we have Samamish botanical society.
Okay.
Give them two acres, they'll create a beautiful botanical garden.
Mm hmm.
We drive all the way to Vancouver to walk on the trees, right?
Yeah, there is one in some Seattle, Japanese gardens, very short, but it's very good actually, yes.
Right, why do we go to Seattle, we can, you know, you know, two bucks per entry fee, it'll all be a revenue for the city.
Okay.
So the city has to create services that residents can consume.
Yeah.
And can be a revenue generator for the city.
Okay.
Rather than just relying only on property tax.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yeah, it looks like there's a lot of challenges ahead kind of things, or at least someone who is really care about all of this as a problem.
Yes.
And trying to solve seems to be a good thing and I think you are on top of it. Uh with that, maybe, the other thing which is concerning is the traffic thing, is the city is looking at it, like, because we have both the main roads, which is Sahali and then East Lake, both of them are single lane roads.
Yes.
Are there any plans, anything, city is thinking about it?
You cannot do anything about them.
Hmm, okay.
So, so, uh Samamish is again very unique in this aspect compared to Redmond and Kirkland and so on and so forth. Samamish is a city which doesn't have a freeway.
Okay.
It does not have mass transit in some terms of light rail, links and so on. And it, it, it's a plateau on top of a hill.
Yeah.
It has to be drained out.
Okay.
Every day in the morning and then filled back in every day in the evening.
Mm hmm.
The problem with the tra- our traffic is that it has a unique spike in morning two hours and a unique spike in evening two hours. So you spend millions of dollars in expanding these roads, they would still be not used for about twenty hours of a day.
Mm hmm.
Right? Not only that, you know, there is no way you can expand the roads because private property owners own the land on either side.
Hmm.
Now, we will consider eminent domain.
Okay.
Uh as a way to look at if we can, you know, at least the Sahali Way, for example, that's number one.
Okay.
Number two, we highly encourage multimodal transport, or transit rather, so bicycling and so on. So I think there is a proposal with the current council itself on the Sahali Way, but we would like to scale it back.
Okay.
So we don't want a lot of these roundabouts and so on, but we wanna make it safe for cyclists and pedestrians.
Okay.
So the Sahali Way study is something that the residents have to really, really focus on because I have seen estimates ranging from eighty five million to hundred and ten million on the Sahali Way improvements. It will not improve the car carrying capacity of the road.
Okay.
It will make it safer for walks and bicycles. Uh but how many people use Sahali Way to bicycle, I do not know.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, so these are all the areas where you wanna look at it and say, is this right return of investment for the residents of Samamish?
Okay. Good, okay, I think we talked about more, I think there's lot more issues, we'll be keep on talking about it, but good to see you have a perspective on all of these things. So with that, I wanna wrap and then go into the personal side of you, what motivated you, maybe that one. We'll switch it to Tamil language, I think you speak Tamil, mo- most of my people listening to this video.
Yes.
Could speak Tamil.
And.
So I'll switch the language and we'll so go to the personal side of it and see those things.
Yeah. Um.
Very good.
So after December ninety six, I came to Salt Lake City.
Salt Lake City, okay.
And then, then, and then I moved to Portland.
Uh huh.
Anga vandu freight liner, I mean, or company.
Okay.
It's called Daimler Trucks North America.
Uh huh.
Anga vandu or a. After vandu, the Daimler Trucks vandu Chennai or a. So I was part of that initial, you know, fifteen member team.
Hmm.
Consisting of few Americans and few Germans who went to Chennai, or a.
Okay.
And then angar kumbo, the Amazon.
Okay.
Amazon la two thousand ten la anga join. Two thousand twelve la, we are growing really fast in Seattle, why don't you come to Seattle?
Hmm, okay.
And then the opportunity use. Uh, naal washo.
Okay.
Tamil. So that was the main.
Okay, so benefit of both the world. It's.
Amazon la.
Appa, okay.
So, twenty ten la join. Twenty fifteen la. Twenty twenty five.
Good, good, nice. Apart from with the. Ongga family.
Ah, the interesting. Na city council. Uh, August one, uh, August one. Ah, vandu karakidila. Nariya. Ah, vandu karakidila municipality board member. Ah, vandu romba environment conscious. Ah, vandu.
Hmm.
Ena taro. Ah, vandu. Ah, vandu municipal chairman. Ah, vandu no confidence motion. And then. Idi. Na city council. Um, taata. Apri sonna. Uh, Thiruvallur municipal chairman elections, uh, MLA election. Sir.
Very good.
Nalla. But. Uh, Tamil. Uh, the. Apri. But I'm very thankful to all the. Right, nama. Namal. Generation. Namal. Uh, it. In the. Civic issues.
Kandipa, kandipa.
Kandipa.
Amma, it's a very big, bold step.
Thank you.
Or.
Rumanandri.
Rumanandri, ungar. Campaign. In the election. Ningi win.
Rumanandri, na win. Elaro. Modinja.
Podano. Wala.
Ina, ipo. Inglewood. Prechni. Road. Private road.
Salo.
All, all. Ilya, you know. So. Apo. Kai. City. Makka. In the. You are easily saving. Uh, ninga. Utility tax. Ninga approve. The utility tax. So. You will easily save five hundred dollars every year.
Yeah.
Right? Right? So, avanala, vandu, andanala, ideas arukkavungla, vandu, andanala.
Romba sandoshom.
Thank you. Thank you.